All right, gang, I guess we're ready to start, so let's go ahead. And good evening, everyone. Sorry for the technical and some physical difficulties we may have had a fair while we were getting ready to start. But I'd like to go ahead and welcome everyone to the July 25th, 2023 meeting of City of Westminster Planning Commission. And I'd like to remind people in the audience that if you would like to speak during this meeting, you have not signed up, there should be a sign up sheet in the back. And if you want to speak during the meeting, we ought to have your name on that sheet, so take care of it before we get underway. Mr. Gurman, we're ready for roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Boshert?
Excused.
Vice Chair McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Jeong?
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Mayo?
Here.
Commissioner Colling?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Tomacek is excused as well.
Beg your pardon. Commissioner Tomacek.
Excuse. We do have a quorum tonight, and we have seven commissioners present, so everyone will be voting on tonight's issue. Okay, the first item for tonight to vote on would be consideration of minutes from preceding meeting of June 13th, 2023. Do I have a motion on approving those meeting?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gurman? Actually, we can do, yeah, we need to do a roll call vote on this as well, please.
Commissioner Jeong?
I was not present for that meeting.
Okay, we don't need to do, it's just, it's an aye or nay? Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes, sir.
Okay, minutes from that June 13th meeting, do pass?
There is one item on the agenda for this evening, public hearing and recommendation of an official development plan for Uplands filing two, block one.
Okay, we're about to start the public hearing and recommendation of an official development plan for Uplands filing two, block one. Jacob, would you please start your presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Kaza. I'm a senior planner with the city's planning division. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 1,345 property owners and addresses, and one HOA within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map showing the location of Uplands filing two, block one. The parcel is outlined in red. The parcel is located south of West 84th Avenue, west of Lowell Boulevard, and north of Bradburn Boulevard. The official development plan would facilitate subdivision of the property for 82 single-family detached and attached homes. The vehicular access point for the development is off Bradburn Boulevard. The development includes a publicly accessible park with a playground, shade shelter, and swing set. And then I'd like to thank the applicant for letting me steal their image that they drew up for their site. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 16 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meet these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the plan exhibits sound, creative, or efficient planning and design principles, the architectural design of the structure is compatible in terms of shape, color, forms, and material, and existing streets are suitable to carry the traffic. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the ODP exhibits sound planning by utilizing tuck-under garages, that the architecture generally meets the design standards, and reflects some of the common modern home designs, and that the surrounding road network can accommodate the additional trips generated by the new development. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend that city council approve the ODP, subject to the additional condition located in the summary of staff recommendation in the staff agenda memo. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priority of ensure that Westminster offers a diverse range of amenities and activities for residents, businesses, and visitors that honor the city's history and support the arts, parks, recreation, open spaces, and libraries is met by facilitating new development and providing new publicly accessible park space. The applicant is with us tonight, and they have a presentation to share with you as well. And we do have a few city staff members here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have. Now we're at the end of the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Jacob. Mr. Willis, you're on deck.
Sorry, this will be Marcus Packner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. We have a little typo on there. Great, no problem. Everybody hearing me okay? Terrific. Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioner members. Thank you very much. My name is Marcus Packner. I'm a land use and community outreach consultant. We are here tonight. Thank you, our slides are up, so I'm going to ask for our slides to change as we go through this. As Jacob just detailed, we are here on filing number two, block one, and we are here to respectfully seek approval for the ODP that is before you tonight for our first neighborhood in Uplands. Next slide. This is the team, the first three speakers there will be presenting tonight, walking through our material, myself, Bonnie Nuzelik, who's our planner, and then Matt Childers, who is the representative of Dream Finder Homes. We have a full team here to answer any questions that you have about our presentation or the backup material. Next slide, please. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our agenda that we plan to cover. We'll walk through some of the material that Jacob just did to cite the location of the neighborhood, briefly describe kind of an overall Uplands update, and then at number five, we really transition specifically to this neighborhood, to the ODP that is before you, and walk through the amenities and the details of the site. We'll be very diligent in working through our public presentation. Next slide, please. Ladies and gentlemen, again, this is parcel B1, specifically in orange is the ODP that we are presenting to you tonight, but we are showing all the different parcels of the Uplands community in this slide. As you see, the larger lot, which is Lot A, this is Lot B, C, D, and a little bit of E, but just to cite and everybody to understand for the public, the overall Uplands community, and then the context of our specific neighborhood this evening. Next slide. With that, I'm going to just step over for one minute to introduce Matt Childers with Dream Finder's Homes. We think it's very important that we have the developers, the actual builders, come forward and introduce them and their background on this site and tell a little bit about their company. So, Matt.
Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. I know this is the next step in a lengthy process of getting development underway here in the Uplands master plans. We're excited to be the first builder ODP you guys see. We have been in business for about 15 years, about 708 here in the state of Colorado. We build from Castle Rock up through Fort Collins, and I would venture to say Uplands is our crown jewel. So we're very excited to be a part of the Westminster community. And specifically, I think one thing that kind of sets us apart is product diversity. One thing that's imperative here on this particular site is there is a lot of topography to be dealt with, with the adjacent Shaw Heights community, and so we have developed two brand-new plan series here specifically to best make up for that grade and make sure we're presenting the best possible product for you. So I'll leave the role presenting to the experts, but wanted to make sure to introduce ourselves. Thank you for having us.
Great. Next slide, please. This shows again the public notice, the 1,350 neighbors that were notified. Again, just showing a map of the area, generally Shaw Heights to the north and Observatory Heights to the south, and surrounding this neighborhood as it nestles in there. Again, very, and I'll go through our community outreach in addition to this public notice. Next slide, please. I do want to just step back, as I said, for one brief, kind of broader picture of the Uplands community update. We think it's always important to air in public disclosure and to show the overall plan, so people that are maybe tuning in and are watching this remotely understand where this neighborhood is as it relates to the overall Uplands plan. Next slide, please. This is a map that we are showing that is really almost like a dashboard for people to start to understand the public improvements or additions, the trunk infrastructure that will come in surrounding the site. And just a few colors here to point out, you can all see them. Red is a sanitary sewer improvement that happens just right on Shaw Boulevard. The blue are water improvements or infrastructure, so that gets built across parcel A. And then you see the green as well, those are storm drainage improvements, again on Shaw Boulevard. And then lastly, you see the full movement light and intersection on Federal Boulevard. Again, very important just to show that. As we go to the next slide here, this shows and sets the stage for this B1 neighborhood. You see the context of the communities and the neighborhoods that are moving forward. So overall, Uplands community, but then these neighborhoods, like the one we're going to discuss tonight. So the darker orange color are neighborhoods that are in the city review process, right? The formal process that are in, those are B1, A2, A4, and then the C neighborhoods that you see on the east side of Federal. And then the lighter orange shows neighborhoods that are beginning the city process. There's actually been some change in the city process, and so we are going through that revised or that modified city process with many of those neighborhoods. Next slide. This is also important to remind ourselves about the open space and the public land dedication. This is something we went through great detail when we presented to all of you before in the PDP. This is a really important dashboard. It is the exact same map that was approved in the PDP. So again, this is the public land dedication. You see the different parcels that are called out and the acreage that corresponds, that totals 34.3 acres of PLD. In addition to that, including here on parcel B, there's significant view corridor, really historic view corridors on the site, so 6.35 acres of view corridor. All of those are completely the same as was approved, and we will continue to honor those as we go through the PDP or ODP process for each neighborhood. Next slide. So as I said, if we can go ahead, we are now transitioning to the neighborhood plan that is before you tonight. We thought, again, the stage was important, but this is the ODP for parcel B1. Folks, I wanted to just remind everybody, when we go through kind of an inclusive planning process, we always look at two things. We look at the guiding documents and community outreach, so I'm going to briefly touch on those two things. First, you see here the comprehensive plan from 2013 as amended. Our site is circled there in yellow. It is R5. As you see at the bottom, those are permitted uses. There were obviously a max of five dwelling units per acre, and then the list of permitted uses. As we went through the process, all of you involved in, next slide, the updated comp plan in 2040, again, consistent, this is now R5, and you see the permitted uses now are single-family detached and paired homes, of course reflecting the PDP process that we had gone through as well. Next slide, in our guiding documents, most recent is the PDP itself. This is the PDP for the parcel Bs, one again on the north side of Bradburn, and this shows we actually have a prescribed maximum number of units that we can build on this site, and we have permitted uses against the single-family detached and single-family attached. So again, completely consistent with the underlying comprehensive plan and the PDP, our challenge tonight is to show you how we're complying with the guiding documents that are in place. Next slide. I think just to show a couple of things, and very importantly, if you look all the way at the bottom, you see a table of community outreach on just this site on B1. We started having meetings on this site because of Observatory Heights and Shaw Heights to really understand this is more part of the surrounding neighborhoods, and we wanted to really understand. So you see meetings starting back in 2019. There's a community, there's a total of 156 community meetings, and literally thousands of touchpoints that have been gathered to talk about how we do these two parcels. Most importantly, the plan elevation has led to three very important things. Remove the vehicular access from 84th, created new height homes and typology at the suggestion of the city and the neighborhood to deal with the drainage and the topography on this site, and then really reduce the grading and the amount of walls on the site, and we're going to walk through that tonight. Next slide, I also just want to reflect back, folks, this was a previous plan evolution. This is something we took to the neighborhoods, and this was something the neighbors, these six items are things that they said, "We want to see you address," as did the city. And we went through and really have diligently incorporated all of these changes to live in front of the ODP that's before you tonight. So we're going to talk about these. Bonnie, we'll talk about how we've brought them to life in our plans, in the housing typology, and really, we wanted to honor the neighborhoods that are around us and plan from the outside in. This next slide is just a reminder, now again, specifically on our ODP, 4B1, very important to focus on that PLD land dedication on our site there, the 2.36 acres there of PLD. I know the apartments there are mountain terrace, the Lowell Terrace, we all talk about that as kind of the terrace there. It's so important that that land stay as part of the PLD, and really, that public land dedication. We also have a publicly accessible private park that we'll detail greatly inside of our site as well. Next slide. Folks, I'm going to end on this one. I just wanted to start here and show you again, kind of the ethos of B1 has been planning from our existing edges. So as you just kind of look at the building, and you see the required setbacks that are there from all the different streets, I just want you to notice how far we exceed all of those required setbacks. The reason for that is, we think it was important to really solve this site internally, to not burden the existing structure, and really improve by design solution some of the infrastructure challenges around us. The only one requirement that we actually matched specifically is our internal building setback. So it shows that we really absorbed, moved the site internally, provided the buffering and the perimeter setbacks to honor those existing neighborhoods all around us. So I'll transition here. Next slide, please. This is Bonnie Nuzelik from Norris Design, our principal planner. She will now detail the ODP and all the community amenities.
Good evening, Bonnie Nuzelik, Norris Design, 1101 Bannock Street in Denver. Thank you, Marcus. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, staff, for your time this evening and over the past few years. As Marcus noted, the public land dedication and setbacks set the stage for this proposed neighborhood. We're requesting a total of 82 homes, which include a mix of single-family detached and paired homes. Access is provided via a local street off Bradburn with a secondary emergency access located at 84th. This prevents traffic cutting through the neighborhood. All the proposed homes are alley-loaded and have front doors and porches fronting on public streets, parks, and open space, helping to create a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that engages with the adjacent public spaces. Central to the neighborhood is an approximately 1.5-acre publicly accessible private park that is easily accessed by a trail network that runs through around the proposed neighborhood and ultimately connects to the perimeter streets and public land dedication to the east. The single-family homes are a tuck-under home type, they're that pale-yellow color. They help absorb grade, minimize the need for retaining walls, and best relate to the adjacent properties. Next slide. The proposed plan also considers a view corridor located just to the south. Here's the before and after condition of the view taken from the southermost point of the view corridor. No proposed homes are visible from this location. Next slide. Another view which is taken at just north, kind of the midpoint along Lowell Boulevard, you can see the tops of homes peak just over the topography, but the mountain views are preserved as intended. Next slide. The proposed neighborhood is highlighted by that centrally-located publicly accessible private park. Next slide. Here, this bird's eye view is looking west across the park and features a tot lot for two- and five-year-olds and five-to-12-year-olds, a shade structure for formal and informal gatherings, and a variety of seating options. Next slide. The west half of the park includes a flat tree lawn, open lawn area, sidewalks that wrap the lawn area and connect to the overall trail network that loops the neighborhood and connects to the perimeter streets. Next slide. The proposed neighborhood includes a variety of sustainability features. All homes comply with Energy Star and WaterSense. All feature Level 2 EV charging. All single-family detached homes with traditional roofs are designed as solar-ready. On the landscape plan, turf is limited to active play areas, covering just 7% of the site. This is compared to the 20% maximum allowed within city regulations. All the tree lawns consist of low-water-use shrub material and native seed instead of high-water-use turf. The landscape plan is focused on creating pollinator corridors to link green spaces. Next slide. The proposed homes include a variety of floor plans and elevation styles to provide architectural diversity within the neighborhood. First, we have the single-family detached tuck-under homes. To help absorb grades, these are two-story front elevations with three-story rear elevations. There are a total of four floor plans and three architectural styles, creating 12 different options to be used on the 38 single-family lots. Each home has a two-car garage. Next slide. Here you can see the proposed homes fronting on public streets or public parks. As alley-loaded homes, the front porches help activate and engage these public spaces. Here you can see the low-water-use landscape plan for the front yards and the tree lawns. Next slide. Next, we have the paired homes. These are two-story homes, which are also alley-loaded with two-car garages. The paired homes include three floor plans and three architectural styles, creating nine different options to be used on those 44 paired home lots. Next slide. The paired homes also face public streets, parks, and open space. Here you can see how they activate the public parks centrally located within the neighborhood. Next slide. As a part of this ODP, we're making a number of public improvements that benefit both existing and future residents of Westminster. Next slide. Some of these existing issues include approximately 15 acres of land currently drained towards the existing lots on our west, and the La Place Court, 82nd-Bradburn intersection is unsafe and has drainage issues. Next slide. The drainage issues are improved through swales along the west and northeast property lines to the proposed detention pond to protect existing homes. Drainage is captured from La Place Court, Lowell, and Bradburn and conveyed into the proposed detention pond. This pond at 84th is sized to capture, detain, and attenuate drainage not only from the B1 parcel, but also from B2, Bradburn Drive, and a portion of Lowell Boulevard. The pond outfalls to existing infrastructure at Circle Drive and West 84th Avenue. Next slide. Internal and perimeter street improvements are also included, such as a widened sidewalk along our property front edge at 84th. With this neighborhood, both sides of Bradburn are improved with curb, gutter, and sidewalk to remove the existing roadside ditches. Additionally, the La Place, 82nd, and Bradburn Drive intersection is reconfigured. Next slide. Here you can see that reconfigured intersection. 82nd and La Place are disconnected from Bradburn for improved safety. 82nd will terminate in a cul-de-sac, which is designed to the latest city specifications, and will be paved. La Place Court will be updated to include two-way traffic north of 81st. Next slide. Included within our ODP are a number of exceptions to city regulations. Exceptions have always been anticipated at Uplands in order to comply with the vision established in the Uplands PDP and provide much-needed housing within the city of Westminster. Next slide. Starting on the left side of this slide, in 2020, we amended the comprehensive plan. At that time, we discussed the benefits of increased housing diversity, providing a density transition between the single-family detached uses to the west and south, and the multifamily uses to the northeast, as well as creating an opportunity to cluster housing while providing public land dedication and preserving view corridors. This has remained consistent as we processed the PDP in 2021, and now as we present this specific neighborhood today. Many of the requested sections are focused on providing housing diversity, providing a density transition to our neighbors, and clustering homes along the public land dedication and parks. Next slide. The city code also supports the need for exceptions. Uplands is zoned PUD, which is defined here. This zone district is specifically intended to integrate land use and site conditions as a unit, to reflect maximum design freedom, to more fully utilize the physical characteristics of the site through the reduction of lot size and absence of setback and bulk restrictions, to provide for diversification and flexibility in housing types, housing prices, and overall design, and to encourage innovative development. Next slide. Our first exception deals with parking. Parking is defined in code and requires two off-street spaces for single-family detached and paired homes. Those are provided via the included two-car garages. Code also requires additional driveway spaces for the detached homes and one off-street space per three paired homes. With this ODP, we propose these guest spaces be provided through a combination of off-street surface spaces and on-street parallel spaces. This does not reduce the quantity of parking spaces required or provided, but simply allows for these spaces to be provided in a different way. This exception improves upon the suburban front-low garage and vehicle-dominated home type that requires full-length driveways, and it also provides increased housing diversity. It encourages adequate parking for land uses without creating excess vacant parking, which is specifically noted as a code provision. It utilizes on-street parking that adds natural friction to the street to slow traffic and encourage more pedestrian movement. It is further supported by our submitted parking study. For some detail, the spaces shown here in orange are the two-car garages for every single home. Next slide. Here we add off-street surface spaces sprinkled throughout the neighborhood in blue. Next slide. And here we add on-street spaces on Osceola in purple. These three parking types meet the total required parking counts for the neighborhood. Next slide. In addition, 49 on-street spaces are provided along the north side of Bradburn. These are not part of our parking counts. These are above and beyond the parking requirements for this neighborhood. Next slide. Our next exceptions focus on how we transition to adjacent uses. First, again, it's important to note that all perimeter setbacks are met and/or exceeded with the site plan. We are not requesting any exceptions to those setbacks. Identified here with the number one in the northwest corner, we are requesting an exception to place the detention pond in the 35-foot setback, which is a design standard for the single-family attached residential uses. Stormwater detention needs to be located at the lowest point of elevation to be fully functional. Due to the existing topography of the site, which slopes steeply- Due to the existing topography of the site, which slopes steeply down to eighty-fourth, the pond cannot be located within the neighborhood and effectively capture onsite runoff. Landscaping is provided in both the detention pond and the landscape buffer south of eighty-fourth, meeting the intent of providing compatible land uses and maintaining aesthetic quality. Next, we have an exception to the west, northeast, and southeast property lines. This standard requires a three-foot-six-inch berm between the proposed homes and adjacent property lines or streets. Along Bradburn, we have excluded the berm in order to promote a pedestrian-friendly and activated streetscape with front porches connected to the street via walks. Along the west and northeast property lines, a combination of fencing, topography, and landscaping is used to create these transitions. On the west, an existing six-foot fence is provided along the shared property line, as well as proposed between the existing and proposed homes, capturing drainage from the proposed lots and diverting it to the detention pond and away from the existing lots to the west. Adding a berm would negate this improvement. Landscaping is proposed to provide additional screening. On the northeast, a berm already exists along the shared property line. This transition is enhanced through a six-foot fence along that property line, along with additional landscaping. Next, we have requested a reduced setback between our internal off-street parking spaces and the paired homes. These are identified in the locations noted with a three. These spaces are purposefully located adjacent to homes to provide easy access for guest parking, and the majority of them are located directly adjacent and parallel to proposed garages. We are simply placing a parking use next to a parking use, negating the need for a buffer. Next slide. Next, we have two exceptions tied to lot size. The first is specific to outdoor living areas for the single-family detached homes. The standard requires usable front porches and side or rear yard patios on fifty percent of the homes. With this neighborhood, we are providing usable front porches along with owner's decks and side decks to meet the side and rear patio requirements on one-hundred percent of the single-family detached tuck-under homes for a cumulative of four-hundred square feet of usable area per home. The tuck-under home type was specifically used for this neighborhood to absorb grade and limit the number of retaining walls. The nature of this home type creates side yards with limited usability. A variety of front porches and decks, which are identified here in red, are placed on the front elevation and provide additional articulation on the elevations, as well as create views towards open space. Additionally, Uplands is providing this for one-hundred percent of tuck-under homes in place of the fifty percent required. Next, we have requested reduced on-lot setbacks. This again ties back to our original comp plan amendment where we discussed the need for increased housing diversity, providing that density transition and clustering homes. In addition to meeting or exceeding the perimeter setbacks and dedicating the public land dedication to the east, this exception allows us to provide more than doubly-required publicly accessible private park internal to the neighborhood. This exception also aligns with citywide goals and policy related to water and housing. The reduced lot size reduces the potential irrigation area of each lot, promoting responsible water use and lowering the community's overall water footprint. Additionally, the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment identified a drop in the ability for residents to become homeowners. These more compact homes on smaller lots provide additional housing options for residents at a lower relative cost than new single-family detached homes on large lots. Finally, we have a couple of exceptions tied to building design. On the paired homes, we are requesting that minor roofs have a four-and-twelve pitch instead of a five-and-twelve pitch. This only applies to covered porches to accommodate regress window requirements above the porches and to shed roofs on one architectural style, which is noted on the upper-left home on this slide. Next, we are requesting a garage depth of twenty-two feet that includes potential stair locations. This still allows for nineteen feet of clear depth for parking while still providing room for stairs and storage. We are also requesting that in place of bay windows, we provide multiple plain breaks and gable end treatments to the elevations. This creates a more dynamic architecture and streetscape solution while varying the overall massing of each home. And finally, materials. We have two exceptions tied to materials. First, in place of brick or stone-wrapped column for second-story decks, we are proposing materials appropriate to the design of each front elevation. This helps to minimize the size of the columns and maximize the size of outdoor living areas while creating a variety of distinct entry treatments. And second, we are providing an average of thirty percent masonry measured across all elevations in lieu of thirty percent per elevation. This allows us to place masonry where it is most impactful, especially at the front of homes along public spaces. This provides the same percentage of masonry overall, but enhances the public-facing facades with no increase to the home cost. Next slide. Finally, standards for approval. In your staff report, you had staff's assessment of our compliance with these standards. We also had provided a full document outlining the compliance for each of these seventeen standards. We have hard copies of those as well if they're helpful to the group. Next, oh, there it is. We won't go through each of these standards, but are happy to talk through any of these details with any questions you may have. Some key highlights include: The proposed plan exhibits sound and creative design principles to best accommodate the existing site conditions and maximize useful, shared, common space. The plan is compatible and harmonious with existing developments and provides protection from adverse influences. The requested exceptions are supported by the intent of the PUD Zone District, the Comp Plan, the 2017 Housing Needs Study, the Uplands PDP, and goals for reduced water use. The plan also includes an adequate street network with pedestrian connections and a plan that conforms with the master utility and drainage study. One last slide. Thank you all for your time this evening. We respectfully request your recommendation for approval to the Westminster City Council, consistent with staff's recommendation as noted in their staff report. Our full team is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, and thank you for your time as well. Okay, commissioners, now's the chance to ask some questions and make comments. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions here. First, just on the, on the buffer area, I know we were supposed to build a berm, and we're requesting an exception on the berm. So I guess my, it looks like grading-wise, what is that, about five feet off the line or something like that is where you have that swale right now?
On the west side, are you referring?
On the west side, I'm referring to, yeah, I don't know if we can...
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, okay. And, yeah, so if we did build a, if we did build a berm per city standards, that would force more water on the adjacent property, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And that's why, why we're going with the swale instead?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Now, talking about the parking and driveways, what, I couldn't see on the plans, maybe they're there, but what's the length between the garage and the private streets for that, those alley-loaded product?
I believe it is about seven feet in order to accommodate rear utility easements.
Okay, so, so there would not be room for anyone to park behind their garage and the driveway?
Correct, we tried to keep that space as small as we could while still providing the utilities needed and make sure every home has adequate fire access.
Okay. Got it. And, and I know you're talking about the five-and-twelve roof slope, that might be a question for staff. Is there a rationale for that building? Since we, that would be why we would have a five-and-twelve max requirement or minimum requirement versus a four-and-twelve?
I believe it was a style preference that the city chose, and the city council approved that with the original design guidelines that they probably enacted, I want to say in the two-thousand, mid-two thousands, and it's a carryover from those design guidelines into the design standards that were adopted in 2018.
Okay, so, so it's just kind of an arbitrary, there's no life or safety issue in that?
It is not a life or safety issue, it's mostly an aesthetic style thing in order to ensure you get like a presence of a rooftop in a neighborhood, just purely aesthetic.
Okay. As far as the Le Place, is it, is it pronounced Le Place? Or Laplace? I don't know, I always thought it was Laplace, but whatever. The, I, was that disconnect your idea, was that the city's idea? Or what was the rationale for disconnecting that from?
We worked very closely with city staff on that.
Yep. I think that's exactly right. We actually met with the three property owners that are on the south side of that, a number of the neighborhood meetings as well, when out on-site, different seasons, and kind of talked about it. So staff was very involved in that process and the neighbors about the west way. Frankly, we wanted to be sure this was actually included in the B-one application, not on B-two, because we think those improvements are actually really important to implement those as part of this process as well.
Got it, okay. And I noticed a lot of the people who wrote in emails were asking about the, this, about the drainage study, the clomer. This one email had a whole bunch of stuff, but it looks, but is the clomer on your guys' play? Is that, is that a city process? What is, what is going on? Can, can one of you speak to the clomer, please?
I'll, I'll go ahead and answer it. Yeah, so the clomer is overall mostly for the parcel A, it's not particular to parcel B. A portion of parcel A is located within the floodplain as identified by FEMA. So as a part of their development, because they're developing that, that area, and it'll be a detention pond is essentially where they're working at. They, they need to process the clomer through my high-flood district in FEMA. So it's in process right now, it's not tying up this parcel.
Okay, what, then, is any part of this parcel of B, area B in the floodplain right now?
No.
All right, so, so that, so basically anything in the A lots are, is completely separated engineering-wise from this?
Generally correct, yeah. So A, A is, because of the distance between the two and the topography, generally separated from engineering perspectives, which is one of the reasons why they want to do this one first.
Now, someone else, someone mentioned construction on Lowell Boulevard. There doesn't seem to be any construction proposed in this. Is that, is that accurate that for this, what we're up, what we're looking at tonight, there's no construction on Lowell Boulevard?
So as a part of their overall master improvements for the development, they do have an approved ODP for parcel A, that master ODP. City council attached conditions that kind of forced the develop, a lot of these improvements to get started right now. So they are improving Lowell Boulevard with that master project. It won't be this development responsible to do it, but the master developer is, is doing that.
Okay, so, so Lowell Boulevard improvements have nothing to do with this specific one other than it's part of the master ODP for A lots?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. That, that clarifies that. Is parking currently permitted on Bradburn Drive?
I don't believe it's signed "no parking," but I don't believe there's anywhere to park other than the dirt. That's my... It's signed "no parking"? I'll trust, I'll trust my problem here, it's downstreet.
There. Is there parking down the street from that once you pass the boundaries and you're more in Shaw Heights? Or don't we know? Are we matching street parking going to the west?
Yeah, there is street parking to the west.
All right. Yeah, I think that, that answers a lot of what I'm, I think that answers most of my, oh, and back to the swale and the drainage, was that designed for the one percent chance a hundred-year storm?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, that, those are my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Oh, Commissioner Dunn, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of brief questions. What percentage of the units in this particular parcel are attached as opposed to detached? Roughly?
I don't think I can do the math quite fast enough, but thirty-eight of the eighty-two homes are detached and forty-four of the eighty-two, so I guess just over half are attached.
Gotcha, thanks.
Fifty-four percent, to be exact.
Okay, perfect. What is Level Two EV charging?
I'm going to have architect come up and answer that question. I'm going to hope he can answer it. I think it just means a little bit faster.
Hi, Paul Brady, architect with the project. It's a two-twenty outlet, so it's equivalent to like your washer and dryer plug.
Thank you.
Commissioner calling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few questions. Actually, I have a question for Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, I just need to disclose that I know Bonnie from my past life in planning. It's been years since I've talked to her, and I think we were in a book club like twenty years ago. But I don't think it will influence my ability to participate in the project.
It works. That's all you needed to say.
Hi, Bonnie.
Hi, Tracy.
Few questions. I noticed that a lot of your community meetings, and this may be from Mr. Puckner, a lot of your community meetings were held during COVID. So my question is, it looked like you had five in 2019, three in 20, four in 21, two in 22, and one in 23. Were those virtual? Were some of those virtual?
We did hold a lot of meetings that were virtual during that time. We generally tried to stay consistent with however the city was holding meetings at that time.
How did those, how well were those attended?
Yeah, actually, we've had great participation in these neighborhoods. I think we've had, we started with specific Observatory Heights, then Shaw Heights, each neighborhood. We actually had a number of neighborhoods, Commissioner, or meetings, excuse me, with the neighbors on the west that we just flyered them directly. And then the neighbors, because of Le Place Court and kind of the way that connects, they've been very involved in that process as well. So we've had very good turnout. I think parcel B-one, we had a very, a different site plan. It's a challenging site because of the grade. So Commissioner, we honestly have had a lot of feedback because of that, and we adjusted that plan pretty dramatically to get here tonight.
I have to give you credit for having those meetings and taking that feedback, which I think is really valuable and important. Thank you for that.
Sure.
The other question, I had a question on Laplace Place also and Eighty-Second. Looks like there's two homes that front on there that are losing their access to Bradburn?
To Bradburn.
So how was that engagement with those homeowners?
Yeah, and I, actually, I think one or two of them, I believe, are here tonight. So we tried to meet specifically with those homeowners to really understand that. As you can see, Commissioner, and you probably know it very well, that just, that intersection happens at such an odd angle. And particularly looking back to the west, it's more than a ninety-degree turn. And so they understood that it's the existing condition that hasn't been very safe. I certainly can't speak for them, but that was a very important thing. I think the other thing is just the traffic that would come down that hill and kind of have some issues with ice and other things. There's a lot of, you know, there's been accidents through the years there. So they're very well aware of that. I think it was very important about that emergency vehicles could reach them. That's why we talked about the roundabout. So I'll certainly let them speak for that, but I think it was a very good discussion about how do we do it the proper way. I bet we showed four different iterations of that plan.
And they're on board with that, then?
Yes, I, I believe so, again, at least how I've understood it, for sure.
Okay, great, thank you for that. And then I have a question that has to do with those reduced parking in the garages. I'm not sure who answers that one. So it's nineteen feet, is that the builder, is that the architect?
The architect.
So nineteen-foot-deep garages, and then the steps encroach into the nineteen feet?
No, the garages are twenty-two feet deep.
Oh, okay.
And it's just those wood steps coming from your door that encroaches in that twenty-two foot.
And, and from our, do we have any guidelines within the city of the minimum depth of a garage for parking?
We do, so that's why they brought it up. They're asking for an exception to our garage size standards. For a two-car garage, it's twenty feet wide and twenty-two feet deep with no, nothing encroaching into that twenty-two by twenty. So that's why they're asking for the three-foot encroachment for, I believe it'd be a set of stairs, and that'd be just, just about to get a three-foot landing so you could turn the stairs and go the other direction if you needed.
Is that for every single garage?
It's going to vary depending on grade. Number of steps vary.
But there'll be some encroachment in every house?
Likely.
And that doesn't concern staff?
We have actually approved several ODPs that have this sort of exception inside of them. Previously, it wasn't a specific requirement, they had to call out like in this sort of manner when we didn't have design standards when they were guidelines. So it was, it wasn't something we would have them bring a lot of attention to for most developments. Highland Village is a good instance of where we have allowed that in the past. We've also allowed it at, I just called Sheridan Green now, but it's, or not Sheridan Green, it's a Highline Greens.
Highland, Bradburn, Country Club Farms.
Yeah, they, yeah, I should ask Paul, he's actually probably designed half of them, so.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I just, I guess you just have to be careful if you buy a unit with a small garage, you've got to... you've got a big Tahoe or something.
And, and for reference, you know, surfing, surface parking space in the lot outside, it's 19 feet deep. So a vehicle can fit within there.
If you park it right and you can get the garage door shut. Okay, and that's fine. My other question, well, actually, it's the exhibit that's up here right now. I think this is very helpful to be able to see where the parking is. I really like this because I don't think driveway parking is necessary personally. I think having parking close to where your front door is is nice. It says these are all alley-loaded, I think this is really nice. But one of my questions had to do, you're asking for a reduced setback for those guest spots, the blue boxes, but you didn't tell us what the reduction was. It's just that you were asking for a reduction, I think that was on slide 43?
It varies by location. I believe the smallest is four feet, and that's from the parking space to the lot line, not to the building.
Okay, to the lot line. So what would the setback from the lot line to the building be?
The attached homes have seven and a half foot side setback, so that would be 11 and a half feet.
Okay, enough room for a sidewalk then. And then on slide 44, can you go to slide 44? That table at the bottom, what does DS stand for? Is that the design standard?
Yes, correct.
And then under rear setbacks on the bottom row, what does the 255 stand for? Oh, okay.
Yeah, we should fix that font, for one thing, to not be white. But yeah, that should say 25 feet, my apologies.
No, that's okay, I was just thinking, it just didn't happen in my head.
We are really big setback on the lot.
The public land dedication, the 2.38 acres, what, what is in that public land area? What, what is happening in there?
So we are, I'm sorry, interrupt you.
Go ahead.
So we are in the process of dedicating that as part of our PDP approval. That was, the first thing we had to do was create all the plaids and dedicate the public land dedication. So we're wrapping up that process, and that will be dedicated to the city, and then the city will take the lead on those design efforts.
Okay, so it'll be dedicated to seeing how it gets, how it gets built out, got it. And then this is 80, it's 82 units, all coming in and out of one access point. I assume that's why the traffic is here to maybe address that. Is there any concerns with that? People trying to get out and go to work every morning at the same time with one access point?
No, we don't have a concern with it in particular. So usually, the threshold for amount of vehicles with one access is about 100 vehicles. That's when certain fire restrictions start kicking in, so.
Great, I have no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you did that, thanks for doing so, but we're gonna ask you to do it again in the public hearing part of it, just so we get it in the right place. But, but I appreciate that, thank you. Commissioner calling's not quite done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Bradburn, what is that improvement section for that street? Is it a local street, is it 36-foot with two, are there parking on both sides?
There, yes, there is parking on both sides. I'm trying to see if we, it is, on page 13 of the ODP, we have that cross-section. So it's an 80-foot right-of-way with an eight-foot walk on either side, 11-foot tree lawn, and then parking on both sides.
And is that a neck-down parking, or is it just standard straight?
It's standard parking.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I have a, just a general question for staff. There were, if I remember correctly, in totality, 11 exceptions requested for the ODP, right? Or, or another way of putting it would be of, of the exceptions that have been submitted to us for, for review and, and approval of the ODP, are there any of those 11 that, that caused you heartburn or you're concerned about?
So the, the exceptions that we had, we, we are all in support of them. The, with the parking, the one thing the staff thought about is the location to transit, proximity to transit. That being said, we've also, we've done reductions of the size and parking before for other developments. The, with the berms, we completely agree with that. It doesn't make sense to put a berm there when you're facing that kind of grade issue and having to deal with the drainage, the parking setbacks. We don't have any harm, any issue with those, and the other setbacks, we don't have issues with those.
Alright, thank you, Jacob. Thank you again as well.
Thank you.
Hey, we will be opening up the public testimony here momentarily, and I also want to remind everyone, public testimony has been received in the form of emails and voicemails occasionally. Mr. Gurman, did we receive any voicemail?
Yes, sir, we did. We have seven that we can play for the, the meeting tonight.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and play those seven now? Get that done, and then we'll go to...
Yes, sir. These will just be played in the order that they were received, there's no special order.
Okay. And let me, let me remind everybody one more time that if you wish to give comments and you've signed up in advance, either if you're at home watching and listening online, or you signed up and back there, you will be called forward to the podium in that order. Please proceed, Mr. Gurman.
My name is Laura Noakes-Lang. My home for the last 54 years has been at 8150 Le Place Court.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask our technical support to help us get that to come out in the right spot, so let me put that on standby if we can for a few minutes, please, sir, and then we'll, we'll come back to them. We could, if you, if you prefer, we could start having some of our signed-up speakers come forward.
Yeah, let's go ahead, well, let's go ahead and move with, with the people that have signed up to speak. So I want to remind those of you who have signed up to, to address the, the attendees and planning commission, we're gonna limit you to five minutes per speaker, so please be concise and please be on time so we can get everybody that has something to say up here, so we can hear from them as well. And if you find yourself wanting to say something that had been mentioned by a previous speaker, then it's in all of our interests and time management that we go ahead and just endorse that opinion that happened the first time around, but we certainly do want to hear from everyone. Oh, and last but not least, no clapping.
Okay, our first signed-up speaker this evening is Karen Calaviti, please.
Hello, Karen Calaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway. I want to talk about a couple of things with regard to this ODP. First of all, there have been several meetings, public meetings, but I do want to remind people that at those meetings, there was been a lot of people unhappy with, with some of these plans. So just because there's been a lot of public comment and a lot of public meetings does not mean there's been a lot of consensus. Secondly, I sent in a letter with regard to the Lowell Boulevard situation, and from my understanding, parcel B is not independent of, of parcel A and Lowell Boulevard. I, I'm under the belief, I think, that the right idea that the utilities to parcel B are coming up through Lowell Boulevard. So it is not independent of the Lowell Boulevard so-called improvements. And those Lowell Boulevard improvements are dependent on what's happening in parcel A, and there are a lot of drainage considerations with regard to parcel A. And I don't, apparently, those drainage plans have not been submitted or finalized, and the, the floodplain delineation hasn't been clarified in that area. So this idea that they're gonna start on construction of Lowell Boulevard, which abuts parcel A and will affect the utilities up to parcel B, that's all, that's all a concern, especially when they're talking about ripping up Lowell Boulevard this September in anticipation of, of the construction. So those are my concerns, is that parcel B is actually dependent on what happens on parcel A and what happens with Lowell Boulevard. And a lot of people are gonna be impacted by what happens along Lowell Boulevard, especially if some of these drainage situations aren't worked out ahead of time rather than after the fact.
Right, thank you.
Okay, our next signed-up speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Linda Grabiel.
Good evening, Commissioner and staff. I've come here to talk about the land, let the land be the talking, because you need to know the special history of this land. First, we're gonna talk about the buffalo. The buffalo grazed on the land at the top of Gregory Hill. They dug wallows, which were shallow depressions. They cut through the solid root mass of the prairie grass. If you ever dealt with prairie grass, you know what I'm talking about, with their sharp clove and hooves. The buffalo would then roll in the dirt to dust themselves for fly and mosquito control. These wallows were where rainwater collected. Today, water, wallows are seldom found due to farmland cultivation and urban development. Kurt Alstad remembered seeing some wallows in the field when he first started killing this land. Then the Southern Arapaho tribe came in the 1800s. They were nomads, following their source of food, clothing, tools, and shelter, plus more than 150 uses of the bison. Southern Arapaho came and maintained a semi-permanent encampment at the base of Gregory Hill near what is now Bradburn in the 1850s. This is the B1 parcel. There were lots of fresh water in the Artisan Springs, that used to be where the Shaw Heights development is. This was a viewing area for the Arapaho as they could observe the wagon trains snaking along the prairie from the east as the settlers meandered up to the Oregon Trail. The Arapaho scouts had lookouts at the top of the hill. The Arapaho resided in this area until the 1870s. Now, this is an interesting bit of history that we alone have. Chief Little Raven was part of the tribe that was massacred at San Creek in 1864. However, he chose to winter his clan in this B1 area when that attack took place. Did he have some mystical forewarning? Perhaps. But his decision to stay here stayed the families that came with him. Then there was a girl named Mary Eslinger that was born up on the top of the hill. She wrote that in a journal. As a little girl, she would go visit the Arapaho children and trade trinkets with them. You may know her as Mrs. John Wick, who lived on a farm on the west side of where Wadsworth and 90th is. In fact, the Wick hand-stacked silo still stands proud and tall there today. Then we have the orchards. In 1881, the railroad came to town, and in 1890, Henry T. Mayhem convinced the Denver Presbyterian to build a Presbyterian university on land that he owned, which was called Crown Point, the highest point in what was then Arapaho County. This caused huge land speculation. The surrounding property was platted for numerous housing units. In 1894, Jacob Fry purchased land and planted the apple and cherry orchards on the west side of Lowell. In 1906, the Coonses purchased 765 acres for $100,000, and the Madison Orchard Company was formed. The boundaries were from 80th to 92nd and from Lowell to Sheridan. You, right now, are on the historic Madison Orchard farmland, so that's kind of exciting. The Artisan Wells supplied water to the orchards by the use of holding ponds. One of the ponds was located where Flynn Elementary School is located. An electric rail line, which was part of the Denver interurban, ran from Westminster Depot to bring students to Westminster University. The university closed and was sold to Pillar of Fire Ministries in 1920. The name of the school was changed to Bellevue Christian School, and Bellevue is French for beautiful view. By 1927, Madison Orchards were the largest orchards west of the Mississippi. However, they began losing money, and the Madison Orchard Company dissolved in 1935. Land was sold for $225,000. Then we have the construction of Shaw Heights subdivision, it began in 1954. It was an unincorporated Adams County because the developers did not want to be incorporated. Westminster had never had a subdivision of this size before with over 250 homes. The children going to Westminster schools could present a problem as Gregory Hill Lowell was very steep, and cars would have to turn on 80th Avenue, go all the way to Federal, and come back to get to this area. So Gregory Hill was graded at this time to accommodate this need. Shaw Heights Elementary School was opened in 1958, and Shaw Heights Middle School, 1961. The view. Due to the large expanse of undeveloped land, the area remained much the same for decades. The highest point of Lowell became a popular spot for people to park and wait for another spectacular sunset to enjoy and photograph. The view of the foothills, the Rockies, and the sky is unbroken at this point due to the slope of the hill panning from the west to the north. The bulk of the Pillar of Fire land was recently sold, and restructuring and development plans are underway. The land needs to be used and appreciated as it has been for the last few centuries. The prime property with the million-dollar view was just to the south of B1. On Lowell needs to remain intact as a viewing park for all to enjoy the uninterrupted view of the foothills and Rockies as countless others have for decades. There's something about the mountains that naturally draws your very soul upward. We have a million-dollar view right here in this city. Everyone needs something that takes their breath away, and this view is breathtaking. If this view is obstructed, the only thing left to cherish may be John Denver's words to a song, because you won't be able to see the Rocky Mountain High from here anymore. Thank you so much.
And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next signed-up speaker is Don Volk, and I apologize if I'm saying that incorrectly.
My name is Don Volk, you hear me okay? My address is 3880 West 82nd Avenue. I've lived in Westminster over 50 years at this location, so I'm aware of what's going on to our properties as we discussed. The Upland Group is trying to convince you that the Bradburn and Le Place Court are very evil. The, the flow, that's a flaw in their concept. Let me tell you why. The cul-de-sac is where we live, is at the bottom of our street. If we were to drive out of our street, we'd drive into the cul-de-sac. We then have to turn and go over the hill. Now, I'll stress information on that, over-the-hill business, to get to the other side to there where we can then turn around and, and get back on Bradburn Drive if we're going to our doctor or hospital. So the construction is not necessary. The people who live here on Bradburn are two of us, two houses. And we see no reason to block off a street that is designated to the city of Westminster as a street. We are the only unpaved road in the city today. We see no necessity for that taking place by blocking off our road. Here is the other facet to this situation. Our snowplow people in the city are very good people. They do an excellent job of plowing the snow. They plow the snow down the hill into the street and block our driveway 90% of the time. Now, what's gonna happen when they put a cul-de-sac there? They're gonna drive the snow down the hill and block a large portion of the cul-de-sac. Now, will a fire truck or a rescue vehicle be able to get down this slick, straight road, turn into our par, street, and then help us if we live for that street and need some access to health or redo, or ambulance? So then the other side of the point is, we have to pull out of our street, then go up the hill. Now, how many of you know where, where the street is? People know, you've been there? You have to go up the hill when the snow and ice are on the hill. I don't have a four-wheel-drive vehicle to get me over the hill to get to the other side. Therefore, I see that this particular assessment to doing this is really not necessary. I think that the city should consider dispensing with this program and veto the fact that Upland has proposed to allow a few select people who are on top of the hill want to keep it as a private road. This is a city street and should be maintained as a city street. I see no real reason for this cul-de-sac program. So if you would address that... So if you would address that and veto it, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time.
And thank you as well for your comments.
Chairman, our next speaker is Charles Ragsdale.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Charles Ragsdale. I live at 8120 Oceola Street. There are a couple of things that I wanted to address. I am concerned about only one entrance in and out of this subdivision. They say there's an emergency entrance. I don't see where that's plotted or where that would be noticeable to the public. If you noticed, if you saw the fire that happened to the north of us last year, all it would take is for one of those houses at the entrance of that place to catch fire, and there is no escape for any of those people living there. There needs to be another access point, and I would recommend that it be on 84th, because it doesn't do any good to have two on the same street. All you're doing is doubling the traffic. Another thing that I'd like for everyone to take a look at is, I know that the city has probably had people do traffic studies on Lowell. But all you have to do is go over there at 5:00 in the afternoon and sit and watch the traffic from Lowell and Bradburn. Unless they do some vast, vast improvements to Bradburn, there's going to be no way that it can handle the traffic that's going to go through there. There are only two accesses to Bradburn that goes in front of that place. It's from Oakwood on the west end or from Lowell on the east end. That's already a cutoff for people wanting to cut across from Lowell to 80th without going down the hill and getting into the situation with the light at the bottom of the hill there. So we've already got a lot of traffic on Bradburn at 5:00 in the afternoon. With people trying to come home to their homes, it's going to be even worse. And I live at 8120 Oceola. We're directly south of the water tanks that the city put in. The only way for us to access to the north is to come across 81st, take Le Place over the hill, and access Bradburn at the bottom of the hill. If you block that off, you take away our neighborhood's access to the north and Bradburn Boulevard. So I'd like to join Mr. Volk and say, please do not close that street off, simply because that's the access for our neighborhood to get to the north. They already have it marked as a one-way street in two directions. You have to come on to 81st, and basically, it's one way from 81st, north, one way, south. So at the current time, it's not usable anyway. The people living north of 81st have to go to Bradburn because it's one way that direction. They don't, but they're supposed to go that direction. They instead come up the hill against the one-way sign, down the other side with the one-way sign, and out onto Oakwood over there. So I would ask you to, one, require additional entrances in and out of the subdivision so that anybody that has to escape under evacuation circumstances can do it. Two, take a second look at the traffic. And three, please don't block off Le Place Court.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Ms. Ann Ragsdale. Please.
Thank you all for listening to us tonight. Charlie is absolutely correct when you look at Le Place Court, Bradburn. Please do consider those things when you are voting for this. And I don't know if any of you have a garage. I'm sure you all do. And like us, it's full of other things than cars. If they're looking at putting steps into that vacancy for the garage, it's going to be a very difficult situation for anybody to get in and out of there, like ours goes into the kitchen. So please consider that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our last speaker who signed up is Terry Hilgundry. I beg your pardon.
Hi, I live at 8161 La Place, Le Place Court. I've called it both myself, and Le Place seems to be the one to go with. And I'm going to just piggyback on what so many others have said, the traffic situation, Lowell, Bradburn, and Oakwood. We haven't said a lot about Oakwood, but walking on that street, driving up La Place, there is just so much traffic. There are three schools on Lowell, and in the morning during the time when students are going to school and parents are dropping off, there's a tremendous amount of traffic. I don't see that any of the recommendations that have been made are going to help that traffic situation. So I really completely disagree with the statement that the existing proposed streets are adequate for the traffic. And I don't think that's necessarily the developers. I think that's the city of Westminster who have to look at the situation. We also had a meeting on Thursday night with Todd and his group, and one of the situations that was brought up was about fire. And I'm glad that was brought up as well, because with these very close-together houses and only one exit place from that area, not only does it impact the traffic, but also in a fire situation, you have that. Now, I'm going to disagree with two of the other speakers. I live on Le Place. I live on the downside of Le Place, and I am in favor of the cul-de-sac there. Every day, I see someone going wrong way on that one-way street, fast up the hill, and if I'm pulling out of my driveway, I'm going to get creamed. And it hasn't happened yet because I have to be very careful. So I think that the group really needs to go and look more carefully at the situation of the traffic in that whole area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all of the speakers who have signed our sign-up sheet, but I am aware that a few others are interested in being called upon.
Okay.
If you'd like to, or I can.
Let's have them.
Okay. Folks, once you start coming up, and when you come up, please say your name and your address for the record. And I'm also reminded by our IT folks on the dais, please speak directly into your mics. Some folks are having a hard time hearing you.
My name is Greg Beacom. I live at 850 La Place Court, which is right at the intersection of 80th and Oakwood. I don't want to repeat some of the concerns about the traffic, but I'm here to tell you that that intersection is already very dangerous. A young man was killed on a motorcycle there months ago. I think that one exit and ingress and egress to that neighborhood is going to spill out into Oakwood, onto 80th, and create just another recipe for disaster. So I would really, I understand that we have 88 units going in up there with two-car garages, and I understand that it's 100 is the tipping point. So we need 18 more to make a difference here. I would just ask that we reconsider this traffic study, the results of the traffic study that we have now. And I'd kind of like some information about that traffic study, about the model that was used, you know, and the best evidence that was presented for that study. I'm sure it's available, and I'd certainly like to see it. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Hi, John Palmer. Under Mr. McConnell's recommendation, I apologize, Mr. Cosa, that I made a statement about the no parking signs on Bradburn. They are no trespassing signs. But let it also be known, there is not room to park on Bradburn currently, either side of the road. Okay. And not to go over what these people have already talked about, but I would have to agree with both the Ragsdales and Mr. and Mrs. Volk that are sitting in the office, in the audience also. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the other lady's name. But the traffic thing up there is a very large concern. Now, when I grew up, Le Place was not a one-way. You could drive over it. In fact, that's where I learned to drive a clutched vehicle, coincidentally. At some point in the 70s, it got changed through the neighborhood to be one-way from the top of the hill both ways. But I see problems with you closing it down and making a cul-de-sac, not only for the traffic, but for the fire and police. Now, if they have to go all the way around or come over off of Lowell instead of potentially coming up Le Place the wrong way, you know, right now, that's accessible and possible. If you put a cul-de-sac at the bottom of that hill, God knows what could happen to the houses up on Le Place or at the top of the hill if there were a fire up there as far as access, or police, or emergency services, ambulance, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Is there anyone else that has not signed up that would like to speak this evening? I believe that's it, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, I have a quick question. So we should probably allow some time for applicant response to some of the things that have come up?
Yeah. First, the voicemails, but after the voicemails, the commission can ask questions of the applicant if related to anything the commission has heard tonight.
Without first making a motion?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I'm told that we should be okay for the voicemails, so I will just again play them in the order we receive them.
My name is Laura Noakes Lang. My home for the last 54 years has been at 8150 La Place Court, so I'm well acquainted with what happens on the streets in this area when improvements are being made anywhere near here. I'm recording this message concerning parcel B1, which is getting closer to being ready for development. Observatory Heights and Observatory addition are close-knit neighborhoods, quiet for the most part, clean, and generally trouble-free. I dread the upcoming construction. If the rate development happens, it's going to be years before grass is growing in the parks and on the lawns proposed. I am pleading for the cul-de-sac planned for the north end of La Place Court and 82nd Avenue to be built before all the heavy trucks bearing construction equipment and materials start trekking over the hill, using La Place Court as a shortcut between wherever they're coming from and any part of Uplands. Only by having the cul-de-sac in place will the trucks and workers be kept from disrupting the peace and safety we so much enjoy in this location. More traffic signage does not work. People ignore the signs and just go where they want, like water. I've seen it happen many times. Please, please spare us. Thank you.
Okay, here's the second voicemail.
I live at 5408 West 96th Avenue, Westminster, Colorado. And I'm calling both as a resident of Westminster and also as a residential real estate broker working in the Westminster area for nearly 20 years now, that you support the Uplands application that you'll be considering this evening in your meeting. Our community urgently needs more housing, and as you all know better than most in our community, we don't have a lot, a lot more opportunities and areas that we can create additional housing for our community. The B1 parcel that you're going to consider this evening brings exactly the type of housing that we need to see more of in our community. And it's my understanding that along with this project, there will be new amenities for the community, such as new open green spaces and parks. I ask that you strongly consider approving this application for the benefit of our community. Thank you for your time.
This is voicemail three of seven.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Keith Awonil. I'm the executive director of Crown Point Academy, a public charter school located at 86th and Federal. I have spoken before about my support for the Uplands community. I would like to reshare just a few of those reasons. The first is that we have a waiting list for student enrollment. Currently, we have no more room for new students until we expand our current facilities. As a result of the Uplands, we are planning on increasing our school enrollment for the first time in more than 10 years. This includes plans for a much-needed preschool program. Secondly, our school sits at a dangerous stretch of Federal Boulevard, putting our student population and parent population at risk every day. We have no traffic signal, no crosswalk, no sidewalks, and vehicles speeding by all day. These issues are remedied as part of the $40 million in infrastructure improvements being made by Uplands. Finally, you can't sustain school enrollment over the long haul without more homes. So whether we're talking about Crown Point, Westminster Public Schools, or Bellevue Christian, we all become more sustainable with families moving into this area of Westminster. I've been following the planning process for years and have taken part in previous meetings. The plans for parcel B1 before you tonight deliver details that are consistent with everything that has been proposed, reviewed, and approved to date. Please vote yes on parcel B so we can start to see much-needed progress on housing and infrastructure in this part of Westminster. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, this is voicemail four of seven.
Yeah, my name is Don Volk. The address is 3880 West 82nd Avenue. I've lived here for over 50 years. The Upland Group is going to give one of our communities some much-needed improvements, and I'm all for that. But I see a flaw in this particular situation, that is, the cul-de-sac at La Place Court and Bradburn Drive. I see no need for this construction of this cul-de-sac. The people who live on 82nd will have to exit onto Le Place, go south over the hill, all well and good, but for winter, noting a problem, trying to drive over the hill in winter snow conditions and ice will be impossible. The snowplows do a fine job in the city, and I applaud them for that. The plows down, they plow down the La Place Court and push the snow to the side roads and sometimes block our street at 82nd. Now, look at soft in the winter. Look at the snow in the winter will make fire, ambulances, unable to get to 82nd Avenue should an emergency problem happen. Is the street of La Place Court designated a city street? It is, I think, a city street. Why should a few people who live on La Place Court demand a blocking the street? La Place Court is not a public street for private use only for a few people. I see no reason for the blocking of the city as street. I suggest that city planners look at this again, and let's hold up construction on this project. I see no need for it at this time, and we should not let a few people in the city of, live on La Place Court dictate to the city on what they should do with the street. It should be an open street. It's a designated street in the city of Westminster, and I see no reason why the city should be voting to block this into a cul-de-sac. Please, please let this message be known to the city planners. please let this message be known to the city planners and look forward to some, the solution to the problem.
Mr. Chairman, this would be email five, or excuse me, voicemail five of seven.
Good morning. My name is Ryan McCoy, and I live at eighty-one seventy Julian Street, Westminster, eight zero zero three one. I was born and raised in Westminster and still live and serve this community. I now raise my own family here. I have served on the School Board of Education for Westminster Public Schools and am now employed by Westminster Public Schools as the Executive Director of Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness, where I oversee the transformation at a former Random Middle School, also formerly the High School, into a full-service campus for career and technical education, as well as STEM certificates. That campus will reach multiple generations and will serve students starting from grade six to adult learners. The new career hub dubbed Random Reimagine will provide students an opportunity to build tangible skills and a career while earning a high school diploma. One of the career pathways offered will be construction engineering. Enter the Uplands community now. We are partnering with the Uplands, and as members, and as partners of their team, will build upon the program that will train and ultimately hire CTE graduates to work construction and trade jobs on-site. This is an exciting opportunity for Westminster Public School graduates to make meaningful and demonstratable impact on the very communities that they were raised in. But this wouldn't happen without strong community and industry partnerships, or without a promise of additional rooftops. Uplands is the result of years of collaboration with the city, residents, and external stakeholders like Westminster Public Schools. I am excited that we're finally at this point where we're seeing the years of planning come to life in neighborhoods that will provide much-needed housing options and parks, sidewalks, and trails. I urge you to vote yes on parcel B1 tonight. It's consistent with what was approved in 2021. It's consistent with the city's comp plan, and it's consistent with the historical Westminster's continued need of a diverse housing and parks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this would be voicemail number six of seven.
Good day. My name is Lucy Seber. I reside at five four zero eight West One Hundredth Court, in the Waverly Acres subdivision, which, as you may know, is just west of the Rebel Mountain Range. I am calling today to comment on the Planning Commission hearing on the Uplands development. It seems that public comment on Westminster development disappears in kind of a black hole slash Bermuda Triangle. You may recall that the 2022 community survey results stated that sixty-six percent of the respondents viewed too much growth as a major or moderate problem. So, why aren't these opinions taken into account? Why even have a survey? The Save the Farm group has been very proactive and opposes this overdevelopment of the pillar of fire property. Initially, the petition drive provided over ten thousand signatures. Again, do city leaders even take notice? Next, a petition drive to place the development as a referendum issue on the ballot fell short, mainly due to the compressed timeframe and weather. But people willingly signed, and I don't believe anyone on Save the Farm encountered a pro-Uplands response. Overwhelmingly, citizens responded like enough already. Uplands has marketed itself as serving the, quote, "missing middle," end quote. Catchy, but untrue. In light of the approval of a special tax district, residents reburdened by runaway property taxes set by the developers and their friends. Some of the elitist comments by city councillors regarding the special tax district are unseemly and false. For example, quote, "This is how it's done," end quote. Wow, ethics be damned. And another comment, "Taxes are deductible," period. Totally untrue in light of the 2018 IRS Revised Tax Code. Another unanswered question in terms of Uplands is the pricing. It has become a big mystery. At one webinar, the pricing was compared to the inflationary price of eggs. Talk about lazy logic. In summary, to go forward with the project at the developer's request shows unmitigated gall. Where's the flood plain study? What about CDOT approval? There are too many unanswered important questions to proceed further. I would also suggest that any pro-Uplands political candidates refrain from having a photo op using this property as the background. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our final voicemail.
Hi, my name is Julius Abdel, and I'm a resident of the city of Westminster, eighty-eight sixty Westminster Boulevard. As president and CEO of the Westminster Chamber, today's comments are in that capacity, representing our business community. I know all too well the housing challenges our community faces, as they've been a product of four moves in a six-and-a-half-year window. These impede our ability to provide a quality of life for existing and future generations. Over the last several years, there's been a growing gap in housing, which has created the climate we are in today, significantly high selling prices and high rents all across our city. We know that housing insecurity, or instability for that matter, affects our community in numerous ways, as residents have to choose between which bills to pay and where they'll be tomorrow. We know that businesses cannot thrive without the workforce that can directly contribute to their success. And we also know that there is a symbiotic relationship between our business and residential communities to ensure united success. I want to thank the Planning Commission and City Council for its approvals of the master official development plan, and I believe it would behoove us to move this project to the building process. In front of you tonight is a proposal that gives us all an overview of where to begin. This B1 parcel demonstrates the diversity of housing we need to see more of in Westminster, and includes resident interests like open spaces and parks. Recently, I was walking in the south part of our city as part of a transportation stakeholder group, and while on foot, I experienced degraded and even incomplete sidewalks, non-inclusive access for those with a disability, and even rushed across eight lanes for fear that traffic lights might change, all due in part to infrastructure issues that have yet to be resolved. Uplands is ready to launch the start of a forty-million-dollar effort, whose use is critical public improvements, which include sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic signals, water and sewer pipelines, and more. I ask that you please vote on the proposal in front of you tonight, yes, to move it forward. We've seen how staying stagnant in our housing market the last several years has impacted our community, and we also see that this is the catalyzing project Southwestminster needs now more than ever. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our voicemails. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Quick question here for anybody. Anybody up here besides me need a bio break? Okay, I thought there might be a few. So, let's go ahead and recess for ten minutes, be back here about eight forty-seven, and we'll continue with the public testimony.
Okay, it looks like we have everybody back in the, in the room here, so we'll go ahead and continue with public testimony. And I think now we've heard all of the email, we've heard all the people at the podium, so now it's time for commissioners to ask any questions that they might have at this point in time. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. We heard a lot of testimony there. First I heard, let's go with the easy ones first. How close are the proposed buildings to each other? Are those ten feet between the two?
Half feet, so fifteen.
Okay. So they're not, this isn't like a midtown situation where they seem to be right on top of it. It's about this.
Yeah, the spacing is bigger than that.
Okay, got it. Okay, there's some, some people brought up about the garage and the garage depth, which, you know, most of us have a step in our garage if we have a house, but are those stairs going to be centered? Are they going to be on one side so you can have like a longer car and a shorter car? Or how is that going to look?
The stair and door location varies per plan, and all the plans are shown on the ODP.
Okay.
Generally, it's in the middle.
Generally in the middle, okay. Now, we were told, well, one of our commenters said that the utilities are dependent on Lowell Boulevard. Now, I'm not seeing any utilities coming from Lowell. I'm seeing, I'm seeing storm sewer going, going along our west side and through the property. I'm seeing, let's tying in water line and 84th and then Bradburn sewer line, the same sign. I'm not seeing anything regarding utilities coming from Lowell. Are there any utilities coming from Lowell?
Yeah, I just wanted to be very clear about that. Parcel B is completely disconnected. It's independent from a utility standpoint. It's not dependent on parcel it is, so that's why this is a separate ODP, separate application, and is being seen and reviewed as such.
Yeah. That's, that's what I, that's what I was wondering. There seems to be, let's see, what other questions were there? As I go through here, doing this before I address the elephant in the room, but so let's just talk, there is a question about the traffic study in general. Do we, I didn't see that included in our packet, but I don't know, maybe someone can go through. There is concerns both about the background traffic on Lowell, what this development's going to do, you know, and a couple, there's a few.
Sure.
A few angles I'm looking here, that as well as, you know, the not allowing the cut-through traffic from Osceola. Is that, is that Osceola? Yeah. I used to be able to read this a lot easier when I was younger. And then Osceola up to 84th, and also the La Place access. What, what if any did it address a scenario where those were open and what type of cut-through traffic would be happening versus what's, what's proposed?
Commissioner, I'll be sure, and you tell me if I haven't worked through the questions. I wrote down a few from just public comment as well. Just two things, and then I'm going to have Todd Johnson, who's our engineer, kind of talk about the overall traffic study, because I do think that's very important. One thing I just want to clarify about our site today, the B1 site, is I want to be sure and stated again, it does have two points of access for all emergency vehicles, and that has been designed with the fire department, with the emergency, as you all know. They're part of the review agencies, referral agencies, and they have control of that. Our first few site plans actually had a second point of connection to 84th, and the neighborhood to the north did not want that to happen in any way, and nor did the city, because that is truly internal cut-through traffic that comes back to Lowell and circles around. So we're addressing Bradburn, which is a minor collector, and we believe that, and based on the traffic study, that is the correct solution. It's actually safer for the neighborhood and the access point. So that's just one I want to be sure. I also just want to be sure that we kind of lost a little bit in our presentation about the Bradburn improvements. Mr. Palmer is correct. Today, it does not have that widening. It's not improved. That's the whole point of what we're doing. So we are adding to that flow lane, to the pavement. We are adding a bike lane, sidewalks, all the, or excuse me, the tree lawn. All of the pedestrian connections aren't there today, and we're adding them on both sides. So that, I just want to start with those kind of starting points, and then we'll talk about the traffic. I do want to say on La Place Court, and you all just saw it, I think probably every time, and I was very careful to be sure I didn't speak for anybody, because that, the opinions on La Place Court change a lot. It is a challenging roadway today. I want to state something really clearly. We are completely supportive of making these improvements, but as you can see, it's not tied to our site plan. It has been an existing safety issue. Nothing on our site plan is triggering these changes. We are being asked to do this to address an existing safety issue. So we're not designing it. We're being told how to make the improvements to this roadway. So I fully respect every neighbor, and you heard all different viewpoints on that, but all we can simply do is give the layout of that and then be told how to address that issue. So I just want to be clear, that's not something we're driving, something we're changing. We don't want to impact observatory heights in any way they don't want it to. This is how the people, the professionals are telling to address the safety issues that exist today. So Todd, if you can come up and just talk about overall traffic study, if that's okay, sir, about how we've gone through that process and where that's at.
Good evening. Todd Johnson, Terraforma Solutions, more of the technical consultant for the project, and also helped out on the overall PDP, ODP side of it. Just stepping back from the traffic perspective for a second on that one, and going through that detail is, as you remember, probably there was a master report put together from the traffic perspective that looked at all these intersections. It actually looked at Lowell and Bradburn. It looks at 84th and Lowell. It looks at the connections coming out of this development and analyzed all those scenarios. And so from that overall perspective, that report was approved by the city. We work very closely with the city on those and those projections in the future, and it doesn't mean that there's not traffic at Lowell and Bradburn. There is traffic at Lowell and Bradburn. We all recognize that, and you may have to sit there for more than, you know, five seconds to make a left out of there, and that's understandable as well. Those are all taken into consideration when that report is done, and the delay that occurs at those intersection is analyzed to make sure that it's still within the city requirements. And so that Lowell and Bradburn intersection actually operates in that C level of service, and then I think in the 2038 scenario, it may get to a D situation, but those are all acceptable levels of service for roadways like that, collector roadways like that, and arterial or main, main roadways that would go through that area. So again, those are all analyzed as part of that master report, and then what we do for each one of these filings is we come back and we look at how many units are actually proposed within these areas from what we projected. We projected 104 units within this area. We have 82 units. So naturally, that traffic is going down, that overall traffic that's there, and so that should provide a better solution to the traffic as far as turning movements. And we look at the turning movements actually coming out of this development, even with the one point of access, we're still at levels of service of A, which, you know, are the best that are out there from that perspective. And, you know, just tagging on to the, to the La Place discussion there, we did work very closely with city staff on that one. We've probably done 20 different alternatives for that area, and the big concerns that are there, of course, from a traffic standpoint, is that curve that's in the roadway there and where that intersects that roadway. The city has taken some great efforts actually in trying to cut down the cut-through that happens in there. They have a very unique situation where they have one-way traffic in two different center, or two different ways on that roadway. And this roadway or this cul-de-sac that we're putting in and the design of that will actually, again, cut that, that unsafe condition that's occurring there. Those, those two or three residents that are on 82nd right now actually are the only ones that can come off of Bradburn and get access to their house going in and out. Everybody else has to go in a one-way situation there. So when, when that cul-de-sac is put in place, then that entire segment of the street would turn into obviously a two-way roadway. That, that design that was put together for that cul-de-sac supports fire, and it actually supports a very large fire truck. That, that cul-de-sac that's in there is, is probably about 20 feet larger than what we see in a lot of other metropolitan communities here. So it supports a very large fire truck. We don't see any issues there with snow plowing that was brought up from that perspective. When you get back over to La Place from that cul-de-sac or 82nd alignment, that, that elevation has actually been raised up now since we no longer have to connect down to Bradburn. So there are conditions that are really favorable for that intersection. But again, as Marcus mentioned, that was really us working closely with the city on an issue that was there to help solve that, that solution, and we understand, again, that there are some that like it and some that don't from that perspective, so.
Right. No, I, I appreciate that, that perspective. I guess my, my thought on the cut-through traffic is that 84th has a traffic light at Lowell, and if we allowed that quote-unquote "cut-through" traffic, people could have got to the traffic light and made that turn and maybe had an easier time with it.
Yeah, and I, I think the other point that you would think about if, if you looked at an intersection connecting 84th, is that now you get vehicles that are coming down another hill, very steep, you know, coming to 84th, and there's really no, if you think about the other side of the street where the residents are, you're coming down and making a connection into that street, and so you're probably getting lights that are now shining into, that weren't there before, coming down this area, and so you, you start to get, I, I think, bigger concerns from, like, I wouldn't want to live at the end of this roadway coming down from this area because it would turn into a cut-through.
All right, I got it. Appreciate all that feedback, yes, and that emergency access design, obviously there's maintenance there, so if you can get a maintenance vehicle and get a fire truck through there.
Yes.
Or use that as, as an emergency exit on the 84th in case of, as they said, a fire that, or something that blocks.
Yes.
There, the, the police could open it up for residents to get in and out until the blockage was done.
Exactly. That's what those are, you know, designed for, to operate in that condition, and I, I think we would remind everybody again in the city of Westminster, you have, you have fire sprinklers in your houses. There's not, there's hardly any other community that actually, you know, requires that to occur, and that is a huge impact, or that has a huge safety add to the residents that are here in Westminster.
Okay. Great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner calling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Jacob or any city staff, just to understand this a little bit better. That intersection of La Place and 82nd is not part of this application. It's not on the same property. Why is it included with this rather than in the B, is it B2 that would be on that, that south side of Bradburn?
Yeah, city staff, along with the applicant, wanted to include it to address the safety concerns as it is right now with adding the additional 82 units onto Bradburn. So essentially, they'll all, they'll all exit Osceola onto Bradburn. We think it starts to get into the point where we would like the applicant to help us address that safety issue.
And the safety issue is because the unusual intersection and the cut-through traffic, but cut-through traffic couldn't actually go through there because it's a one-way to the north, right?
Correct, yes.
Because it's not for cut-through traffic, it's just because of the intersection.
It's the blind, it's the blind corners.
The blind corner.
Yeah.
So they're addressing that as part of this application, even though it's on the same property?
Correct. It is on the B, so part of it is adjacent to the B parcel, and we would seek some, some level of improvement with the B2 ODP if, if we didn't seek it with this one.
Got it. And that existing road, 82nd, that's not even paved right now, it's a gravel road. And that's going to be improved to city standards, a paved road, curb and gutter?
Correct. It would have curb, curb, gutter, sidewalk on the south side, I believe, and it would, I believe, feature a 92-foot radius cul-de-sac.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? At this point, I'd like to close the public testimony and call for a motion and a second on the item at hand. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to recommend that City Council approve the ODP for Uplands filing to Block 1, subjected to the conditions listed in the agenda memo, except, except for removing the La Place Place improvements from the ODP.
Have a second. Got to have a second by voice, folks.
Second.
Commission, final questions and comments?
Well, I've, I've got my mic on still, I forgot to turn it off, but I will say I appreciate the applicant team and city staff on what they've worked on here. I think that we're, I think this, this parcel is the easiest one to develop, having really limited connectivity to the other parcels and the other improvements. This will allow them to get started. It's protecting this view corridor, which is great, and I just think we should hold off on the La Place street being part of this, this development right now, just because I think there's, I, I get there's been a lot of work both ways and there's, but I also think that where it comes in on that curve, there's, I think, just by cutting down some vegetation to get that site distance, and I'm concerned about, you know, I think we shouldn't be burdening our residents with, with improvements that are great in a perfect world, and, and if this were, you know, if the houses on 82nd weren't there, maybe we'd have a different conversation, but I think that this is, I think it, I think keeping that, that community cut-through, well, I wouldn't say cut-through is not the right word, but community access is important, and that's why I, why I went the way I went on that. But overall, I'm, I'm very impressed. I think the engineering is good. I think the architecture is good. I think the utilities have been thought out. It seems like, I like the fact that you can now park on Bradburn when the new cross-section's there, you can actually access the view corridor, whereas now you can't, so, without trespassing, so I think it's a great project.
Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I would like to echo some of Commissioner Carpenter's sentiments here. I very much like and appreciate that Uplands has, has followed our, the development of our comprehensive plan and other of our policies throughout their development, and has ensured that it remains compliant with, with our policies and the way we want to do things. I also am very pleased with your, with your environmental stewardship and your preparing the, the, the single-family detached houses to be solar-ready if the, if the, if the homeowner so desires. So thank you for that, and I appreciate your process all the way. So, thank you for that, and I appreciate your process all the way through this. And I will definitely be supporting you.
Jacob, I have a, I have a question for you before any comments. So the, the statement is we are approving the ODP for Uplands filing to, subject to conditions listed in the agenda memo, were those just, just the technical conditions in the documentation?
Correct. The additional conditions were just some technical corrections to the document.
Okay, but one of those technical corrections had nothing to do with the, around, with the La Place and cul-de-sac?
Correct. Staff don't have any technical corrections on La Place.
Okay. So the exception, I'm, I'm just asking for clarification on your motion.
Yeah, the motion is to, the motion is for the ODP removing the La Place Court improvements from the ODP. As the other exception, other than the conditions that were listed in the agenda memo. And the reason that I do that besides the connectivity, also, ODP is a regulatory document. Code enforcement's gonna use it everything else. We put it, we put that in there, it becomes set in stone. Someone's, they're gonna have to do an ODP amendment to change it. And when I think there's still some community discussion, that, a larger community discussion of the residents of La Place and West 82nd there to, to really, with the city, and to really determine what the best course of action is, I think we should recommend moving forward without that La Place Place improvements as part of the ODP. And that, that was the purpose of my motion, and that's, that clarifies it for you.
No, no, it certainly does. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the difference between the technical conditions that, that we had to consider for approval versus the suggestion that the cul-de-sac and the La Place Place improvements be postponed until a later time. So with that said, I, I wanna point out to everyone here, we, this is not the final voice on the ODP. We are, we, we, our vote is making a, a recommendation to city council, and they'll be taking it, that recommendation up. But do we know when that might, when they might do that, Jacob?
September 11th.
September 11th? Okay. Anything else? All right, let's go ahead and. Commissioner calling, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to voice my support for the application. I think it's a very creative design. I like the product diversity. I like the interest in four-sided architecture. I think you guys have done an excellent job with water conservation and some of the techniques you're using. I like that you pulled all the garages off of both Osceola and Bradburn. I think that's awesome. You got front door space, and I think that's, I think a lot of your design is, is spot-on. However, I don't agree with this motion to remove La Place, so I will not be supporting this motion for approval.
Okay, I see no red, red lights on. I think we're ready to call for the vote. Mr. Gurman, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Torres? If I may, you are voting for recommendation of approval, but removing the La Place Street improvements. If I paraphrase Commissioner Carpenter correctly.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner calling.
No.
Vice Chair McConnell?
No.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Jeong?
To maintain the integrity of this process, I will continue to recuse myself from this vote.
Mr. Chair, point of order. To recuse, Mr. Jeong actually has to seek your approval, since you're chairing the, the meeting this evening. I'm not sure what the bases for Mr. Jeong's recusal are, because I wasn't here before. So, but the decision on a recusal is up to the chair and only the chair, and there is no appeal of that. And the person seeking recusal needs to provide a basis to the chair for that recusal.
Chair, this, this original project, when it was presented, I had to recuse myself because I live in the neighborhood.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Jeong. I, I do believe I remember that, and I accept his recusal, or I approve of his recusal.
Okay, I'm going to claim that I'm, I'm a little confused. I need to go. Did I die? I apologize. So, Mr.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Howling?
No.
Okay, Mr. McConnell?
No.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mr. Jeong?
Recused.
Okay, thank you. I, I count four yes votes.
That's correct.
The motion passes.
Do we have any discussion of old business? Anything miscellaneous business? Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody who showed up this evening. Appreciate all your hard work and your comments, and everybody drive home safe. Go ahead and adjourn the meeting. 9:15 PM.